Good evening, everyone. This is the May 17th meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School District School Board. And welcome to everyone tonight. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Heather?
I have a second.
Gianna? All in favor? Seven in favor and the school student rep in favor. Public comments, is there anyone here to speak this evening? No? All right, moving along. Approval of the May 3rd regular meeting minutes. Do you have a motion? Tom?
I move to approve the May 3rd regular meeting minutes.
Second? Heather? All in favor? Oops, changes, sorry. I skipped that. Any changes? Yes. Oh, did I see a hand? Oh. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? No? About this time? Okay. Then, all in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Announcements, commendation, and comments from the district.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe from the high school. I have quite a few tonight, actually. So first, today we had a little ceremony at the high school to celebrate Kim Wolf for becoming the New Hampshire healthcare hero. And so it was just nice to see a lot of our faculty come in and all the wonderful things that people said about her and really recognize all of the hard work that she has done and led us through COVID and the advocacy that she has for our staff and for our kids. So it was just a wonderful moment today to be able to share that with everybody. Our Mouth of the River has earned second place in the Press Association Awards. And so one of the things I noted in the article that was written about them was just the judges discussed how many commendable attributes the kids have, but also the magazine has. So I wanted to make sure people were aware of that. Ellie Plord, one of our art teachers, has a sculpture that was accepted in a juried exhibition at the Mosaic Art Collection, and it's actually on show from May 8th to May 31st at the Mosaic Art Collective Gallery in Manchester. So she is an artist in her own right, which she can then bring that profession into the classroom, which she shares with the kids, which is amazing. We had underclassmen awards last Thursday, and so that was a wonderful night to be able to celebrate so many of our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders and the wonderful things they're doing in the classroom. Our National History Day kids, the five of them going to Nationals in June. And so it was nice to be able to just see everybody, recognize them for the hard work that they do all year long. And then progress reports did come out last Friday, and so I make sure parents were aware of that. And now I have a lot of dates for you. There is an end-of-the-year calendar that was in last week's newsletter. I will also put that in this week's newsletter, so they're all there. But I want to make sure maybe the community who doesn't always get that, we're aware of these dates. So tomorrow night, the 18th, we have the National Honor Society induction at 6:00 P.M. Next week, on the 23rd, we have the World Language induction at 6:00 P.M. On the 24th, we have our high school music concert here at the middle school, and that's at 6:00 P.M. On the 25th, we actually have connections training. So that's something that Shannon Karen, our director of counseling, has brought into the high school. We have a group of students, volunteers, and a group of adults that are being trained by NAMI. And then they themselves can then go into different advisories or different groups that are interested in that training, including the public. They can then train people also. So that's an all-day training on the 25th, which is also prom, so prom next Thursday night. The 26th, we have our D2 State Track Meet at the high school, and that'll be at 5:00 P.M. 29th, just a reminder, there is no school. The 31st is the senior art show at 5:00 P.M. June 1st, we have Coffee House, the last one for the year, so that's at 6:00 P.M. June 2nd is the last day of CTE for seniors, and I just wanted to make sure that parents were aware of that. And then June 5th is our science showcase. And then I know Paige will talk about Senior Week and some of the graduation stuff coming up. Were there any questions?
That calendar exists?
It exists. It was put out last week, and so parents should have that.
Can you resend it to me, and I'll send it out to the board?
Absolutely.
That's a lot of dates for them to hang on to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, DIJ coordinator for the district. I have a couple of updates. We have held our first initial meetings of our Black Indigenous People of Color Student Base at the middle school, and it's been pretty successful in attendance with over, like, 20 students attending. So we're hoping to move that forward into next year. We're planning on holding our last session for that space the first week of June, so excited about that. Last week, I finished up all the workshops for the DIJ teacher PD plan for the year. We ended talking about classism, class culture, impacts on students. So I'm working on sending out a copy of that PowerPoint and resources to teachers this week. We recently held a New Hampshire Listen facilitator training for the DIJ community group this Monday. Yeah. And then June 5th at 6:00 P.M. in the Learning Commons, we will be having our end-of-the-year meeting and barbecue. So I am super excited about that. I led a class lesson to some high school students on the historical impact of redlining and how that aligns with environmental and health outcomes. And I also met with the fifth grade team today to talk a bit about age appropriateness and questions they had about DIJ in the curriculum and teaching and stuff like that. And then lastly, I had outreach from UNH. They're doing a program called True Leaders in Equity. It's a summer institute and also a year-long program. And we are partnering with them to send two high school students to do this program, so complete the summer institute and then also do an extended learning opportunity. It will be a student-led project that they will present May 2024, and this is at no cost to the students, so that's awesome. And then they get to pick an equity issue or a community need that they're really passionate about addressing and figure out a project to address that issue. So I'm really excited for it. I just sent out emails to students that applied, to the two students that were accepted, and hoping to follow up with more updates soon. Any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
No other district updates? Board updates or announcements? Well, I will say that the empty bowls event that is still probably wrapping up right now out in the Learning Commons was just amazing. And, you know, congratulations to all the artists who, both artwork and the bowls, I did purchase a bowl, the bowls were great, as well as all the musicians who performed and all the faculty who were involved in that, art teachers, music teachers. It was just a fantastic event. District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
So I know there are many things going on this evening, so I am going to leave it to the sustainability coordinators under my report. That would be John Bromley and Rachel Allen and Sarah O'Brien. So I'm going to ask them to come up and talk to you a little bit about their work that they've been doing this year. It's been one, they've been extremely integral part of the Sustainability Committee and the work that we're doing, and I'm very, very excited to see where this goes in the future also.
Hello. So like Suzanne told you, I'm Sarah O'Brien. I teach at the middle school. John Bromley teaches at the high school, and Rachel Allen teaches at Moheramit. We are the three building-level sustainability integrators. This is a position that came, there used to be a position that was part-time, a sustainability integrator, and now the role has been dispersed to teachers at every building level. And we recently incorporated a Mastway person out of our work going to talk to all the schools. So tonight, we just wanted to give you the condensed version of what we presented to the entire district at staff meetings throughout April. So our goals and intentions of these presentations were to highlight the initiatives that are already happening throughout the district with regard to sustainability, to make sure that staff realize this isn't something new, that they're already doing a lot of this stuff, and just kind of bringing this to the front of their minds again, to come together for a shared definition of sustainability that we'll talk about a little later on, and to help us set goals for our work in the future.
And so part of this presentation that we gave to all four of the schools in the district was to try to get our staff all on the same page. You know, every year, there's turnover and new people come in and leave. And so part of our presentation was to give a little bit of history around the existence of this Sustainability Committee at the district level, going back some 10 years and revisiting the Sustainability Vision Statement that was established in that original committee, again, that has been in some form or fashion for the last 10, 11, 12 years. And then we also took some time, our animations aren't quite right here, to also acknowledge the fact that in 2021, you'll remember Meg Maloney, in August 2021, she was a Sustainability Fellow that Maggie Morrison had hired or helped to get into the district, and she wrote a sustainability management plan that's been sort of adopted by the district. It sits on the district website. It was written in the height of COVID or that summer 2021, I remember it well, doing a lot of Zoom with Meg. And she wrote the 63-page management plan, and out of that management plan came seven focus areas that help, are helping, hopefully, to, you know, over the future, into the future, guide the decision-making of the district, you know, how we, where we get our energy from, construction, land use choices, and so forth. Our purpose, though, in the presentation to staff was to highlight these three particular, those red circles, that part of the management plan is focused on waste, which our schools are all focusing on, specifically composting a lot, of course, DEIJ work, but then obviously curriculum and getting our staff to start thinking about in this presentation what role we might have at the classroom level in incorporating more sustainability themes. And so this is a screenshot of that particular chapter or focus area, the curriculum part of things. And one of the goals that Meg Maloney, goal number one articulated, was that we need to work on exploring and finding the best model for curriculum development. And so our presentation to the four schools was really that first step of engaging the faculty in a full way to begin exploring the best model and to begin that discussion. So from there, we turned it over. I'll let Rachel pick up from, or whoever, Sarah?
Yep. So we just wanted to make sure staff knew that we weren't saying, no one's doing this, right? There's a lot of things this district's doing that's amazing for sustainability, and so we highlighted some pieces that people had sent to us that we noticed. Our middle school, obviously, is a really prime example of how we can be sustainable, even though not all buildings have that. We showed some pictures of solar education happening here at Oyster River with Revision Energy, who put our solar panels in. We highlighted our composting efforts that are happening throughout the district at every building, our farm-to-school produce throughout the Oyster River Cooperative School District, raised garden beds, which we found out at our Mastway presentation are at every school. We were not aware of that at the time. Trout in the classroom happening at the middle school, the Moheramit and Mastway fourth-grade solar playground Lego builds, even just the small reminders that our teachers are doing every day, like reminding students to turn off the lights or turn off the water fountains, bring in reusable water bottles. And then also our clubs and student engagement across the district. There's a lot of amazing things going on at the student level that's outside of the So then we then took some time to give some different definitions of sustainability, but also give teachers an opportunity to talk with each other about what they think sustainability means. And then we really began to highlight these, the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, as Oyster River's view of sustainability. And John can talk a little bit more about the history of that.
I think that's about right. I mean, so the first time as a district that we started to adopt the SDG, these UN SDGs, was in Meg Maloney's report. So in many respects, I think the message we were trying to send to the faculty was that this is the new definition. This is the definition that, you know, many people across the world are using, what we mean by sustainability in the district with Meg Maloney's report, is highlighting the usefulness of the SDG. So part of our presentation was to bring these forward as the working definition that the district is adopting.
And I think what's so great about these SDGs is that it gives an opportunity for any staff member to feel involved in sustainability, no matter what their role is, because it encompasses so many different things. There is a really great YouTube video, if you want to take the time to watch it, it's very quick. We unfortunately don't have time right now. But we then asked staff to consider a couple of questions that surrounded how we, or how they feel that they incorporate sustainability into their workday, and also how they feel we're doing as a building and as a district as a whole, and then also just where we might need some work, what they think that we could do in the future. We also gave out a rating scale, one to five, how they feel we are currently incorporating sustainability into our workday across the district. You can see that most people felt across the schools that we were somewhat incorporating sustainability. We're not fully there yet in the as much as possible range, but that kind of led us to our goals as coordinators. And we really would like to focus on how to best integrate sustainability into the existing curriculum across the different schools. And we are also continuing to focus on composting across the district. And we, like Sarah said, we've recruited Mastway, so we've made some, I can't even think of the word, progress there. Thank you. And one of the things that was a really common theme, this is, this goal comes directly from the surveys we took from staff of what they were talking about and saying. I think when we introduced the SDGs, everyone felt like, oh, wow, we can do this, but let's not, like, no one wants it to be an added thing. And we didn't want it to be an added thing for anyone. So our goal is really, I bolded integrated. We're going to try to make this part of what we're doing, but clear, so that kids are getting, like, common experiences, that we know the progression of how things are going K through 12, there's communication about what's going on. And then those bulleted points underneath were kind of teachers' suggestions of where we can integrate this without it feeling like a lot. So flex and advisory in the middle and high school, year-long themes, which are already happening at Moheramit and, I believe, Mastway as well. A lot of people wanted more common experiences where outside experts are coming in, like, they got excited when they saw the revision slides. And then just more professional development, understanding, time to communicate about understanding the SDGs and how they are incorporated in all of the content areas. Any questions?
Just an observation. So this was really, really great mini presentation on the work you guys are doing. And, you know, when the report came out in '21, everybody kind of looked at it and said, oh, my God, it's just so much. So I really appreciate how the three of you have focused in on what's doable and just, you know, really focusing in on our strengths and building from it. So nice job.
I kind of have a year where I wasn't here, so something might have happened that I'm not aware of. But I remember near the end of my last term, there was kind of a concern that our nutrition food services made money by selling plastic bottles, and that that was an important revenue, part of the revenue for food service, but it created the problem of, you know, just generating so much plastic or using so much plastic. I'm just wondering if any movement has been made to reconcile, because it seemed to me that was against our values in some way. And I'm wondering if any progress has been made on that.
So our food services director, Doris, she's been on our committee this year. We've met monthly, which I think is an increase from what had been meetings, so we've been able to make more progress, I think. And the new food service director, I believe, will be sitting on the committee, right? Yeah. Okay. I think the plastic water bottles that are being sold, we haven't addressed that specifically, but the plastic that's being served in the cafeteria, we are looking into compostable options. Doris went into a food show, and she found all these great options, and we're kind of just weighing which ones will be accepted by our composting company to make sure that we're not getting things that can't be composted. And then, of course, there's the financial side of it as well that I can't speak to as well, but I know that there's a, there's a voice from the kids and the teachers talking about that as well, and I think everyone's trying to work together to come up with a solution, hopefully for next year, for at least the serving materials.
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate you folks, you know, when we kind of reconfigured and said, okay, we're going to spread this out to the schools, and I think it's been really useful and helpful. I wasn't aware of the trout. Can you speak to that a little bit, the trout in the middle school?
So that's, right now, it's happening on, in one team, but it's about to be expanded further to more of fifth grade. Trout are a threatened species in our estuary, and they're the brook trout, so they're being grown in our science labs. And then they're actually going to release them on Service Palooza Day to help with increasing the population. Yeah.
Heather?
So you three have been amazing to work with this year on the Sustainability Committee. I cannot speak highly enough of how thoughtful you have been, how prepared you were going in to talk to all the teachers. It took a lot of time for you guys to work through that process and make it sort of palatable. One of the immediate success stories you have is that we've been trying all year to find a coordinator for Mastway, and you guys sealed the deal. So that is super exciting. But you guys are doing amazing work with this position, is also being advisors to different sustainability clubs. And so thank you so much. And Tom, I think it's still a problem. I will add it to the list.
Can I say something about that? I think it is, it's still a challenge in all the, you know, the plastic, there is, there are efforts, though. I think that's, that's where we're at, is trying to find compostable options. As Sarah said, we did take a stab at, during Earth Week, there was a national, like, lunch-free, or plastic-free lunch effort. And that just, and I don't know, we didn't measure anything, you know, as that was happening, before and after or anything like that, but it did sort of spark, you know, a conversation around, hey, well, I guess that means, like, when it comes to, like, serving yogurt on a tray, we don't need to put it in a plastic cup. Are there ways to just, or as we serve things, be increasingly mindful of the products we use and trying to just get away from, you know, the, any receptacle? And trying to, and now that we have composting throughout all of our schools, trying to find ways to capture food waste, you know, without having to have the container. So it is still a challenge. I know Doris is, we've worked really hard to sort of raise the, you know, raise the awareness and be just increasingly mindful, but I would say as a district, that is definitely one of those, like, but what about that? You know, how do we handle that? How do we be, increase our, just be more consistent in the things that we sell with the mission of sustainability?
Could I just follow up? Because I guess a question I'd have is, like, if we need, right now, we need to sell these bottles for economic reasons, what is the, you know, could we put that money into the budget and not do it? You know, I mean, is there some possibility? I don't know. But I think it's, it just seemed to me that this is something we ought to take on because it seems contrary to our, you know, our values, so.
And I feel like as teachers, when we go back to the seven areas that Meg Maloney highlighted, you know, our roles as teacher integrators, you know, I feel like that question, the budget question's beyond our pay grade. You know what I mean? So it did come up, I think, in some of the paperwork, the
Surveys.
The surveys that we collected, because we asked about at your classroom level, at the building level, and at the district level, and there were definitely several comments at the, you know, comments regarding district-level policies around plastic and, you know, cafeteria, but those are beyond what we can really have. We can draw attention to it, we could probably be part of the solution, but it really is beyond, you know, our
I also think, like, a big part of what we can do is, we can not sell it, which would be great, I would love that if we could figure that out, but we're also working on the curriculum side, so kids know why. They can make choices not to buy it, too. Or make, maybe they need it that one day, and, but they don't make that choice the other four days of the week. So I did hear after our Earth Week and the plastic-free lunch, we went down to cafeteria, and they were serving grapes in a little plastic container, and the kid goes, oh, now I can't get grapes today, they're in plastic. So they're talking now, and I think that's definitely something that we can take on is making sure the kids are talking and knowing that they have a choice. And then I'd love to see that other side happen where it's not even a choice.
Yes?
So thank you guys for all of your hard work. I really appreciate it. So it's exciting to see what you guys are working on. And I think Tom hit most of the things with the plastics, I had the same questions. One of the things there with the budget would also be, like, you know, if you were having just, rather than having a single serve of yogurt or fruit, you end up having to have the possibility of somebody having to serve the students it. And of course, that's going to hit the budget, too, because you might need a person to do it at the middle school and the high school, and they can do it. At the elementary school, maybe not. But one of the questions I had was regarding the raised beds. It's exciting that all the schools have them. But over time, I've wondered what aspect of the curriculum we're using them for, because some of it's, like, you're planting a seed, and we could talk about plant growth and photosynthesis and whatever. But of course, the majority of plant growth is done during the summer. So, you know, we're not here. So I was kind of wondering what aspect of the raised beds that we're using, because I don't think we're necessarily using them for food production that's going into the school, because of course, it's growing during the summer season. So I'm kind of wondering if you could expand a little bit on what's happening with the raised beds, things, because I'm a little, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. I can only speak for the middle school. Joe used to run a garden club, so it was really used as an extracurricular activity. Some of the food did definitely get brought back into the school. They would highlight it when we had some of that food come in. They'd be like, look, this was the stuff we grew. And some of it got to staff. And then I recently saw that some of the garden beds are actually getting donated to food pantries. So there's also been years where, I know in fifth grade, we teach photosynthesis, we've been able to work with them. There's plenty of planting and seeding and all of that that goes on at the beginning of the year and that we could show at the end of the year. But yeah, I think it's been more of like a supplemental thing to the school instead of, like, built-in every grade level gets to experience it all in one year. But I think it's used a little bit differently at the other schools. I'm not certain.
So at Moheramit, it's primarily used by different teachers to just speak to the life cycle of a plant. But I have noticed, I'm relatively new to the district and to Moheramit, so I don't know exactly what they've done with the vegetable plants, but I know that they were growing tomatoes last year, and I believe this year as well, so I'm not sure exactly what's done with the produce, but they are, they're using them, I think, more just as a curriculum piece around the life cycle of a plant at this point. But I do think that it would be very interesting to explore how we could use them in a more sustainable, meaningful way.
So I know Doris, Doris does the best she can, she uses them, all the, all the vegetables that are grown. And we do have summer programs that have kids that are being fed through the district, so, so they are being used as much as possible.
So they are being used as much as possible.
This is just, I have one small question and then a more substantial question. At Moheramit, do the beds still have like, we called it a hoop house around them? Is it still like a little makeshift greenhouse type thing?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, you can bring that back, that was really awesome. My fourth grade class built one of those, and that was super fun. But then my other question is, one of the focus areas you have placed emphasis on recently, it seems like, is DEI? And I was just wondering how you're tying that into your work and, you know, what that's going to look like.
Since this presentation, I know that Sarah has had a few people at the middle school reach out to her in ways that we could collaborate more on that. But that is definitely in the works.
Yeah, I think the SDGs really incorporate how everything can be together and how we can't just meet one need without meeting all of the needs to move forward sustainably. So I actually, after we presented at the middle school, our DEIJ group at the middle school reached out for the presentation, because they wanted to look through the SDGs and see how we can work together moving forward. And last year, we met the DEIJ PLC, and then John and I came in and we kind of just talked about how they can connect, because I don't think it's natural for everyone to see how it connects, but it really does, and neither can exist alone. So it's nice to start those conversations, I think, is what we've done so far, and we'll keep bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Denise. Just a couple of things, I'll be relatively brief tonight, there's no action necessary in anything that I'm presenting. Denise sent you out a concept of how the superintendent search committee could work involving all of you. So if you have feedback for her, just send that to me and I'll make sure she and Matt get it. And then, again, nothing for tonight to be decided, but I did, Jay did create a memo related to the incoming classes compared to the current classes, and goes back to the presentation I did at the last meeting, where we're starting to see 30 or so kids less per class. We've been in conversations with the grade five teachers, Jay has been in conversations with the grade five teachers, Suzanne and I and Jay met with them yesterday as well. And so they understand that the idea that they could work with one less teacher, they get that, they understand the enrollment piece. And they also, what I said to them, and Suzanne said to them yesterday, is with these four workshop days coming up, we'll provide them as much time and resources as they need to get ready for the fall. And we also committed to providing them time in the summertime to get ready for the fall. So right now, the way it would work and as we're seeing it is it would be a one, three-person team, and then two, two-person teams. And just as an example, Jay provided that down below to give you a sense of how it would work. What we would see is that all team members would be teaching math. We think that's an important piece, because then every teacher is in a position to help kids during flex time. And the math program is going to be updated and renewed this year anyway, and so we're going to spend a lot of time K through five, providing professional development in math. So the teachers are engaged in the conversation, they understand why, they understand it's also going to be hitting grades six, seven, and eight in future years. So Suzanne and I will be meeting with the entire middle school faculty to kind of lay that out with them in the coming weeks. So this is a memo just to give you a sense of how it would lur, could work next year. And here's Jay, walking in right while I'm doing the presentation. Good timing, Jay.
Sorry.
So if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them. All right, thank you very much. So next, next time, Jay will have a final presentation for you, he'll have the assignments done, and then we can support our fifth grade teachers in getting ready for the fall.
Thank you. Business administrator, nothing tonight, okay. Student rep?
I mostly just have senior reminders. So the project graduation deadline has been extended again, this time to May 19th. Still not super high numbers, so just if students want to be included in that, they should definitely register soon. For Senior Week, our Canobie Lake trip and our cruise on the Thomas Layton, that deadline, I believe, is passed yesterday, but if you still really want to take part in that, you can reach out to Ms. Johnson ASAP. And then any students, not just seniors, if you want to buy yearbooks, then that, that should be done quickly, because there are limited quantities. And then the senior scholarship awards and the senior awards will be June 8th, Thursday. And then the scholarship ceremony will start at 5:30, and the award ceremony will start at 7:30.
Thank you. Yes, Heather?
All right, Paige, I have a question for you. What is Project Graduation?
Project Graduation is, so the night of graduation, it's like this secret event, you know, you sign up for it, you don't know where you're going, but it's just organized by community parents who want to, you know, give the senior class one last, you know, fun time together in some mystery location.
It's also a alcohol-free event, so it's to teach the kids that you can have great fun without having to drink.
Lots of fundraising was done for it, so it's a lot of hard work, and we really appreciate.
Yeah, I know, usually it's, traditionally seen, a lot of senior parents, but then as far as chaperones, it would, it used to be, I don't know if it still is, junior parents would chaperone, so that the students didn't have to have their own parents chaperoning. All right, thanks, Paige. Bylaws committee? Nothing tonight, okay. All right, unanimous consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from unanimous consent? Yes, Heather?
I don't want to pull it necessarily, I just wasn't sure, I saw anything in the backup about the superintendent authority for hiring. I assume that means we're authorizing Jim to go ahead and say yes to things in a more timely manner than we could do at a board cycle?
Exactly right, Heather. Every year, the board provides me the authority to hire, and we are in the hiring process. And as I interview people, they could have multiple offers. And so it's kind of like, I need to be able to say, yes, we want you. And then when we get to the next board meeting, I still present all the same information, it's just that you're recognizing that I've done that. So you'll see all the people I hire, as you have right along, it just won't require a board vote in order to affirm my decision.
Okay, with that, I will motion to approve the list of policies for second read, which is second read and adoption, IKF graduation, JICI weapons on school property, and safe weapon storage education, HF superintendent's role in negotiations, and also the nominate, the list of proposed administrator and guild members, and the superintendent authority for hiring. Is there a second? Heather, second? All in favor? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor? Next is our board meeting calendar. Thank you for adding the budget workshop day into that. Any other? Yes, Heather?
So I had a couple of questions. September 7th is a Thursday. Are we moving that meeting for a specific reason?
Probably.
Well, so I emailed Wendy, because I'm like, I'm going to ask the question, and everybody's going to go, well, we got to talk to Wendy, but Wendy was out of the office today, so she who knows all was not available.
So we don't have to take action, I can't answer that question today, because I can't remember why.
I did look, and I didn't see anything, so that's why I was asking. And then Juneteenth?
Juneteenth would have been a Wednesday, so we needed to get it off of.
Okay, so that one's a day off, okay.
Yeah, that's a holiday.
And then, not that I want to force our lovely Alexander and Caleb to do extra work, but if we're going to Moheramit, at Mastway, and the middle school, we haven't completed the circuit if we don't go to the high school at some point. We don't have to, I'm just sort of saying, that would be the full circuit of all the rotating rotations. Okay, I'm going to stop now.
You know, that's an interesting, that's an interesting observation that I didn't think about, Heather, because we used to, we stopped cycling into the middle school, because it was just a nightmare, you know, to do. So, yeah, you're right, never, just never gave it a thought.
Okay, so we will hold off on this for the next week?
I'm sure Alex is in the back groaning.
No.
He lies, he's a liar. So like I said, if, you know, two road shows are good, if we wanted to do a third, that would also be good, but I don't want to put more work on people's plates either.
All right, we will, we will take another look at that, then. And summer technology device purchase lease. Sue?
Josh isn't here tonight, because he's at a conference, so Sue's covering.
Yeah, so if you had any questions, I can answer them for you. I just asked Denise to add to that, to give me the authority to sign and Dr. Morse to certify my signature when we get the actual lease paperwork, which is a lot of documents that need to go between us and the leasing company. So that, just add that to the motion.
And I just want to add how Josh and Sue worked together, because the interest rates we were getting from the vendors of the computers were astronomically high, and Sue went out and sought independent leasing companies, and as a result, the leasing that we're getting is actually really good for the, for these times. And Josh is implementing the, the concept that we talked about during budget season, where he's buying first and fifth and ninth grade computers, so we get into a cycle of replacing them rather than it being so random. And that's going to work out really great for the students and for the technology department.
And it also includes those of you boards, we're replacing the Promethean boards.
That's right. So it also includes purchasing the interactive TVs, much like, you know, we've seen in this school. And so that's pretty exciting, because the definition of the interactive TVs is much, much brighter. You know, as the LCD projectors got old, they get faded, so. And of course, they're breaking down like crazy on the Promethean board, so this is going to be a real boom for the elementary teachers.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the bid as presented.
Is that acceptable, Sue, or do you need the whole thing read out?
I need the whole thing, if you would, please.
Need the whole thing read out, and take a stab at it, Matt?
Yeah.
A motion to approve the proposal from municipal leasing consultants for the total amount financed of $411,191.60, with four annual payments of $110,485.95.
And then, can you include to give the business administrator the authority to sign paperwork and allow the superintendent to certify your signature?
I will include as presented.
Is there a second on that? Heather? All right, all in favor? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor?
Thank you.
Can I pause one second, because I don't think Karen got that, and I couldn't hear you very well, so I'm guessing Karen?
To give the business administrator the authority to sign the documents and the superintendent
To certify.
The authority to certify.
Okay. Next, we have a list of policies for first read, which include IHAe, physical education, IHAMA, teaching about alcohol, drugs, tobacco, and then deletion of the current policy, which, you know, is, it's replaced by the new IHAMA. So, wait a minute, wasn't there another? Nope, okay. Thought there was another one in here. Yeah, I'm not sure about that, actually, now that I look at it. It's, that's not physical education. I apologize. It should be IHA, I thought, IHH, yeah. So this is actually not written correctly on the agenda. It, it should actually be, because what we actually looked at in policy committee was IHH, which is World Language Programs. I apologize for not catching it before. And what we did with that policy, with IHH, World Language Programs, is we just eliminated the third paragraph, just, just to, basically to give us more flexibility, instead of specifying, you know, what, what it would look like, you know, and if we extend it into the elementary or what, whatever. So we just kept the first two paragraphs the same and eliminated that third paragraph. For policy IHAMA, that is a new legislative requirement. And so we had to essentially replace our old policy with what the state was requiring, which is what you have. And that was, those are basically, those were the changes. So I don't know if folks have questions about those or comments? Yes, Heather?
In the new alcohol, drug, and tobacco policy, in the second paragraph, on the third line, it just reads really weird. So, "The district shall provide developmentally appropriate education based on the needs of pupils and the community regarding the effects of alcohol and other drugs, misuse of, the hazards of using," read weird, and so just...
You're, you're correct. It should actually be, so it, you're, you're absolutely right. So what it should be is that, "Based upon the needs of pupils and community regarding the effects of alcohol and other drugs, misuse thereof." So all we wanted to do was replace the word abuse with misuse, but the comma should be like after thereof. And then it continues, "The hazards of using tobacco products." Yeah, you're correct. Any other comments or corrections? Okay, then, with, with that, can I have a motion for first read for those? I don't know if you want to do both of them? Yes, Heather?
So I motion to approve the list of policies for first read, including IHH, World Language, and IHAMA, teaching about alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, and deletion of the current policy, IHAMA, teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and other abused substances.
Is there a second? Tom? Okay, all in favor? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor? Thank you. School board committee updates? Heather?
So we had our Sustainability Committee meeting on May 4th. We talked about our goals. Our first goal, again, was reducing waste, so we talked about composting. We have compost bins now at Mastway, some of the small ones for the classroom folks, and we have someone, new information, who is interested in being our Sustainability Coordinator at Mastway, so that's really exciting. We went on an overview of Earth Week and some of the different Earth Week activities, and we talked about that at the last meeting. Doris talked a little bit about one of the food conferences, conventions that she went to, and was talking about some of the new vendors she is looking at for compostable c-.
for compostable containers that are color-coded. They're like, super green on the rims to say they're compostable, and others are really blue to say they're recyclable. And it's very clear and very, you know, it's going to be really easy for everybody to know exactly what you can do with that bowl, container, spoon, fork, et cetera, et cetera. And that's one of the, one of the vendors she saw. There were others that did similar things, but she was pretty excited about that. And as Sarah mentioned, we also do need to clear that because Mr. Fox only takes certain certified, BPI-certified compostable containers. So just because we can buy it doesn't necessarily mean we, as a district, will be able to compost it based on the limitations of who we use as our composting person. So there, it gets wrapped up, and it can be quite difficult to sort of solve that. One of the things, the, the teacher meetings went really well. They were, we got that presentation today. I'm just sort of trying to, like, look through my notes really quickly. I think one of the things we talked about was that the messaging through Earth Week, particularly at the middle and high schools, was really great. They did trash on the lawn at the middle school, except it was trash in the parking lot, because no turf field. And, and so, you know, people got that, this, this goal we've had of composting and reducing waste, they really saw that it made a difference through, you know, watching, watching the little movie, which is, I'm completely blanking on it right now. Kiss the ground, there it is. They did that in advisory and flex. And so trying to figure out how to put some of that programming, school-wide programming, earlier in the year, so the, the students start to really identify and, and see it earlier than waiting until Earth Week in April. And so how do we maybe do this? Sort of something at the beginning of the year, and something that corresponds to Earth Week, and, and what that might look like. So there was some discussion about that that was really great. And I think, I've got Sue here, the rest of them boogied. Did I miss anything? Awesome.
Thanks, Heather. I love the idea of color-coded, because I am one of those people that I just, like, is this recyclable, compostable, trash? So that's actually a wonderful idea, if it would work. Any other committee updates? Okay. Any public comments? Does not appear there are any members of the public. So closing actions, our future meeting, June seventh and June twenty-first. And we do not have a non-public tonight. What we do have after adjournment is a workshop with Rachel for DEIJ. She has a presentation for us. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Yes, Heather?
I love the fact that I've trained you to look at me. I motioned to adjourn.
You got us all trained. We'll start calling you the Heather.
How about the second? Gianna? All right, all in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. Sure.